We're getting a little bit of a late start on today's policy session, so we will jump right into today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for November 14th, 2017. I'll now turn it to members of the city council to see if they have any information or follow-up requests they'd like to make to the community. Members of the council? Councilman Noakowski, you have any?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I just really want to thank everyone who came out to all the GAIN events, all those neighborhood groups that hosted the GAIN events, and also for the individuals that coordinated the South Mountain Parade last weekend. Turned out to be a great parade, and also the movies in the park that we had out there trying to bring communities together. Also, this Sunday, November 19th, the historic Roosevelt Neighborhood is hosting a home tour. So if you ever drove by Roosevelt and you always wonder how those homes look inside, you have an opportunity to come on out this Sunday, November 19th. I also like to invite everyone to come out to the grand opening of Hayden Park on Tuesday, on November 28th at 6:00 PM. Hayden Park is located right off of Third. Come on out and look at all the great amenities that we put out there for that new park. Also, as you know, that Burton Bar Library is closed right now, but we've relocated temporarily at Park Central Mall. I really want to thank all of our staff and everyone who was able to move our library, the Burton Bar Library, for a temporary site right there at Park Central. So if you have a chance, come on by and check it out. We have computers, children's programs are still there, all kinds of books, and come check it out. And basically, that's it, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, the Food City, Copa Food City was this weekend. They had about 260 teams out there. It's one of the largest soccer tournaments for young people. It turned out really great. It was on the west side of town. So thank you to Food City and all those sponsors for supporting our youth and getting them out there and moving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Gago, please.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski is going to be doing the home tour on Sunday. I think I'm going to go to the Roosevelt Road Pie Social.
All right.
And then I understand it's also an important day. We'll be celebrating Councilwoman Stark's birthday as well. So happy birthday to the councilwoman. Agree with Councilman Noakowski that the GAIN events went very well. In my district, often the ones that were partnered with an outside organization or another event were the best attended, so I think that's something we should look at going forward if we can partner with existing events to build attendance even beyond the folks who are involved in block watches and get new people in our community involved in public safety. The Warehouse District just got some great national recognition as an up-and-coming neighborhood, and one of the people who helped do that is Heidi Janenga with Web PT. This Wednesday, she's going to be recognized with the National Founder of the Year Award from the Spirit of Enterprise Awards, so congratulations to Heidi Janenga and the whole Web PT team. I am sure that all of my colleagues saw the news reports and received emails regarding the shade trees that were removed at Central and Adams, and I wanted to request from the city manager's office if we could report back to us on what happened and any options we have in that area. Shade is definitely something that is important in our climate and would like to know what we can do to make sure we are adding trees, not reducing the number of trees. There is a lot of work going on in Washington DC on a tax bill, and one of the possibilities in DC would eliminate the federal historic tax credit, which is a hugely beneficial program that can help revitalize areas. We saw its impact with DeSoto Marketplace, Hilton Garden Inn, as well as the Kofelt Housing Complex in Councilman Noakowski's district across the street from my own district, and I really would love to see that tool continue to be something we have on the table. So I'm going to be sending a letter to our congressional delegation, asking them to oppose that portion and support the historic tax credit, and would welcome anyone who's interested in joining me on that letter to please get in touch with my office. And then finally, some good news on the justice side. Our county received more than a million-dollar grant to test sexual assault kits, so several thousand more kits will be tested. So this is great news, and said it before and will say it again, but it should continue to be a priority for funding. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone who participated in the GAIN events. I was unable to attend them, but my staff was there and said they were well-attended and greatly appreciated. I also want to thank the Parks Department. We had the grand opening of the new dog park at the Deer Valley Community Center. It's the first for three fills, and I thank them very much. Everyone's very excited, especially the dogs. And the music conservatory that's located at Metro Center was honored. It won one of the 12 National Endowment of the Arts Awards this past week, and they were honored that they had the live performers at the event, which did an exceptional job. And on a personal note, I just want to thank everyone for their compassion and support for my family and I this past month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, last Friday was our kickoff to Phoenix Cares, and so District 3, District 4, and District 5 will be hosting a meeting for our residents Tuesday, November 21st at the Christtown YMCA, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then we'll have another one hosted by District 1, 2, and 3 on Thursday, December 7th, at the Deer Valley Community Center. And then, November 22nd, right after my birthday, we have a grand opening of the new improvements to Moon Valley Park, and that will be from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. And I want to echo everyone's comments on the GAIN events. There were so many this year. They spread out over the course of the month as opposed to one day, and they were just a lot of fun. Great to see all our neighborhoods getting out and really becoming neighbors and knowing each other and really looking out for their area of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. As Councilwoman Stark has stated, November 21st on Tuesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Christown YMCA, 17th Avenue in Missouri's is our Phoenix Cares Community Meeting. I highly encourage everybody to participate and express how we will be able to demonstrate how Phoenix Cares operating, but also express concerns. We have an all Camelback cleanup that is this Saturday, Saturday, November 18th. It's on the southwest corner of 17th Avenue and Camelback at 7:30, and we are preparing for the holiday shopping season, and a number of Camelback Corridor stakeholders will be partnering up with the city, LISC, and Local First, and the International Rescue Committee. And then, this is why we're preparing, on December 2nd, we will have the World Bazaar, and it's the 2017 World Bazaar and Community Market, Saturday, December 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the 19th Avenue and Camelback Park and Ride. This is a great time to shop locally and get some diverse ethnic gifts, and you can also hear great music and have great food, so hope to see you. I want to thank the sponsors, Dunlepp &amp; McGee, the IRC, Vitalist Health Foundation, Local First, Mountain Park Health Center, and LISC. And then, the Neighborhood Leadership Studio. The Neighborhood Services Department is hosting a Neighborhood Leadership Studio graduation ceremony, November 28th, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM in the City Hall atrium. There are 12 neighborhood groups that have completed their classes and their community projects within this last year. The event starts at 9:00 AM. It is an informal meet-and-greet style so that the groups can meet and network along with council members and staff who are available. NSD and Public Works will be presenting 27 program graduates with certificates of completion. The SHEN Subcommittee will be formally recognizing their efforts in the community later in the morning. And District 4 graduate is the Pasadena Neighborhood, and I would like to give a great shout-out, a special shout-out, and congratulations to A.J. Marston, and thank her for her leadership. And finally, happy anniversary and have a great holiday season. It's a time to reflect, it's a time to be thankful, it's a time for blessings and wish families and friends a great Thanksgiving and safe travels.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, very, very much. Other members of the council? Please, Councilman?
Congratulations to Mayor Greg Stanton, who was named one of the top U.S. Public Officials of the Year by Governing Magazine. Very exciting.
Thank you very much for saying that. My name was on the dotted line, if you will, but it really was because of the great teamwork of this city council. Mr. Zirker, you and your staff, professional staff, cities headed in a very strong direction, and I think Governing Magazine recognized that. I'm the mayor, so they gave me the award, but it's really on behalf of everyone. Thank you for that nice recognition. All right, any other comments by members of this council? We're now going to move on to item...oh, I'm sorry. Call for an executive session. Vice Mayor? We have one.
Mayor, in accordance with the proper legal notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute Section 38-431.02A meet-in executive session on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona, and on Wednesday, December 20th, 2017, at 9:00 AM at 300 West Jefferson Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
That's the motion. Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, do you have any reports or budget updates at this time?
Mayor, I do not, other than to add my congratulations to you on your recognition from Governing Magazine. Well deserved.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is item number one. Item number one on today's agenda is our report and update from our Economic Development Department. So this will be our annual now report, Economic Development, Trade, and Economy 2017 Update. The City Manager, let you introduce the item.
Mayor, thank you. As you all know, we have a highly regarded professional economic development director who provides you all with great support in building a diverse, dynamic, and desirable community, and so your economic plan is now three years old, and Ms. Mackey, Ms. Johnovich from the city manager's office are here to give you an update on how that plan is working and what's going on in our economy, which is probably the foundational element of our city. So, Ms. Mackey?
Good afternoon, Mayor members of the council. We're here today to give you an update on our economic development activity in the past year and talk to you about what we plan to do in the coming year. As this council gave us guidance in 2014 and really repositioned the economic development strategy, we have seen a strong increase in job creation since that time. Before we get started on our report, there's so many good things going on in Phoenix, and we're being recognized for things going on compared to our peer cities, that we thought we'd play a quick video for you that kind of encapsulates all the information in one location. Mayor members of the council.
Musical choice, that was real.
It kept you awake.
I liked the music, it was good.
That's a good thing. As we...probably the strongest component that came out of your direction to economic development staff in 2014 was the diversification of our economy, was to focus strongly on high-wage jobs and those jobs that have a strong economic multiplier, and that's what you're going to see before you today. If you look at our GDP, our economic growth, the metro Phoenix region is up 2.6%, while the nation is up a percent and a half. If we look at our advanced industry jobs, and those would be those in biosciences, in advanced manufacturing, in advanced business services, in technology-related industries, in 2007, 44% or 45% of our companies were in those areas, and today, nearly 62% of our companies are in those areas. Probably the area we found most significant in changing our strategy is the wages in Phoenix are up 7.6% over the previous year, meaning that we're attracting the right companies and those companies with a strong economic multiplier into the region. In fact, we were named number one of the top 25 metros for wage growth in 2016. If we look at kind of our by-the-numbers, this year, staff, the team is here behind me. I sit here at the microphone and work with all of you, but the staff deserves the credit for the significant work that they're doing within the city. Over 11,000 new jobs came into our market, and those are between new companies moving into Phoenix and new jobs created by our existing companies. 951 business retention, expansion visits. 75,000 job seekers were assisted through our Business and Workforce Center and our One-Stop Shops. Nearly $1 billion of new capital investment, and 32 new companies chose Phoenix with economic development assistance. When we look at our targeted job creation, it is in a very diverse sector and very diverse industries now. You see advanced business services as one of the leaders, and what we mean by advanced business services are financial services companies, customer care companies, data centers, software, those type of companies. We see strong growth in our manufacturing. In fact, you'll see in a slide or two, significant increase in new manufacturing attraction coming into Phoenix, and our life sciences companies are also moving along strongly. As we were putting our end-of-the-year report together, the numbers in front of you actually surprised us. Our advanced business services, we saw a 60% increase in advanced business services selecting Phoenix. More importantly, 120% increase in manufacturing companies choosing Phoenix. And why manufacturing is so important is they have a strong economic multiplier, meaning for each job they create, they might create three to six additional jobs to support them, depending if they're a basic manufacturer or an advanced manufacturer. So while an advanced manufacturer may bring in 1,000 jobs, they may bring in an additional 4,000 or 5,000 jobs that support their efforts. And 140% increase in regional office and corporate headquarters. As Mayor and council knows, we had a long hiatus without any corporate headquarters choosing Phoenix in which to locate, and now, year over year, we're adding a significant number in to this market. I want to thank the mayor and council for its strong dedication in our business and retention outreach efforts. Those 951 visits, you took time out of your agendas and your calendar to go visit with our companies and share with them how incredibly important these companies are to us, and they're the backbone and the strength of Phoenix. So I know you give up a lot of your time to visit with these companies, but they truly appreciate all the work and efforts you do on their behalf. On our entrepreneurship activities, we are seeing a tremendous increase in the number of entrepreneurial and startup companies that are now choosing Phoenix. And why that's so important is those are our next new companies. When you think about where tech companies grew from, they all start with an idea, and we want those ideas to happen and grow here in Phoenix to create good jobs, but most importantly, they're typically loyal to the mothership, meaning they want to grow and stay in place. We're not as great a risk of losing them to other markets as we have been, as we are with some of our companies. As we started working together on this strategy in 2014, we had just a few incubator and co-working spaces here in Phoenix, and you now see quite a number of them, not only in the co-working and entrepreneurial spaces, but in the events that happen here in Phoenix. If we look at our technology job growth, this is another area that Phoenix is excelling. In the central city alone, which is one of our 13 employment corridors, we've seen a 318% increase in technology companies choosing the central city. So there were 67 in 2012, and we've seen a tremendous increase, and that kind of is the way that's going across the country. Those tech companies are more interested in moving into urban areas, they want to walk, they want to be connected, and they want to be near the university programs that are here. We're number three in high-tech job creation across the country and number four in best place for young professionals. Prior to the redirection of mayor and council, we didn't even make the top 10 of the lists in any of these areas. When we look at our innovation district, this was guidance given at the mayor's State of the City by mayor in this council in 2016 to create an innovation district. A committee was formed, and that commission has...the steering committee has 15 members. They're made up of our universities, our leading entrepreneurs, thought leaders, and the development community that came together for the past year to give guidance and direction on how and where an innovation district should be formed. That report is being written now, and will be back before this mayor and council in early 2018 to provide you the update and the results of the innovation district. We'll have a new website, we'll have marketing pieces, and a map that goes along with that. Why an innovation district is important, it really gives our startup and entrepreneurial companies a chance to connect well with our universities, our prime companies, our leading-edge companies, to draw strong capital and attraction into this market. If we look at our biomedical campus here in downtown, Phoenix made a huge investment in the early 2000s to bring biosciences into downtown Phoenix. It was kind of that new, cutting, leading-edge opportunity, and Phoenix was the thought leader for this. In fact, so much, it invested and built a building for the Translation Old Genomics Institute. Just earlier this year, this council voted to sell a long-term lease with an option to purchase that building to TGen and City of Hope. So it's doing...the investment is doing exactly what mayor and council envisioned that investment to do and is driving new jobs onto that campus. Up in the upper left-hand corner, you see University of Arizona's Biosciences Partnership Building, which opened this year, and we'll continue to see new and great things happen on the Biosciences Campus in 2018. Not to be outdone is the Arizona Biomedical Corridor, which is part of the Mayo Campus along the 101, just west of Scottsdale Road. In June of 2017, just a few months ago, this council authorized an intergovernmental agreement with ASU and the City of Phoenix to install infrastructure that would support a partnership with Phoenix, Mayo, and ASU to build a 200,000-square-foot health solutions campus. First phase will be a $75 million investment, and we expect that to see...that come out of the ground in 2019. If we look at our international business development, our exports are up significantly. Over 2013, they're up more than 20%, with the most significant coming out of Mexico. From 2010 to present, we've seen our exports with Mexico increase by 150%. That's due to this mayor and council's strong focus on Mexico, your trade missions and your activity there. As you'll see, our top five export countries, Mexico at $8 billion, Canada at just over $2 billion, and South Korea at just over $1.3 billion. You'll see also in the export commodities, it's a pretty diverse export group that we work with. Mayor Stanton and Councilman Noakowski attended the ribbon-cutting for our Hermosillo office earlier this year. At that announcement, it was also announced a new Mexico manufacturing company, a printing-label company coming into Phoenix. They're doing over a $2 million investment and going in just south of Sky Harbor, so we're excited for this company to move in. I think in the coming months, you'll see a number of other companies announce, which most recently, of course, we had Zoomit Plastics announce moving into this market. As you see, we have trade delegations that really are key in making those connections between our state and the Mexico investment, and those in Mexico looking to invest in this country. So you'll see some of the photos from some of our delegations. This council each year authorizes two export tech programs. We've done a total of six to date with 14 companies graduating. One of our most significant now exports and trades with 38 different countries. This company did not do any trading, this is Pinnacle Transplant. They did not do trading with any other countries when they started through the export tech program. And what this program does is it really gives our companies an opportunity to go from export curious to export serious, and giving them ways, how do they fill out their bills of lading, how do they transfer their goods, how do they work with the Exim Bank, how do they work through these opportunities. Council's direction was also to create a vibrant heart of our downtown community, which you see in front of you. Upper left-hand corner is the dual-branded Marriott, which opened earlier this year. Viva Phoenix in the middle. Barrister, which is 120 new for-sale condos this council approved a development agreement with earlier this year. The Final Forge Champ Game in the lower-left-hand corner, Block 23, Fry's Grocery Store, Creative Workspace and High-Density Residential. And then, on the bottom right, is the Adam Street Activation at the Renaissance Hotel, so the first phase of the Adam Street Activation that's now been put in place here in downtown, and we look to move that through the balance of downtown. Nearly 4,500 high-density residential units are either just completed, under construction, or planned, and these units will bring more than 6,000 new people to live in downtown Phoenix. Most recently announced was the Link down in the bottom right-hand corner. We've issued four requests for proposals that we are either have brought back to this council for their consideration or are in the process of bringing back to you, with the Nipe House, 17th Avenue and Camelback, our Fifth Avenue property, and Central and Camelback, and we'll see each of those city-owned properties activated in the very near future. Grand Canyon University continues to grow. This year, they added 1,800 new jobs onto their campus with the completion of their 300,000-square-foot corporate headquarters right along Interstate 17, so looking forward to continuing to work with this great change agent in Maryvale. The South Mountain Technology Corridor was announced this year at the mayor's State of the City by mayor in this council to bring...really look at this new employment corridor. This will create our 14th employment corridor, and really to look at it in a different fashion. As we know now, a significant portion of the technology jobs are more in the East Valley, but as mayor and council asked us to really drive and dive into this market, what we found is 39% of the West Valley's workforce goes to the East Valley to work every day, and 69% of the West Valley's workforce goes east of I-17 to work each and every day. What that means is there's a highly qualified, educated workforce that can act as a strong attractant to new companies, and we're already seeing developers interested in that area. This council approved the RFP for the Del Rio landfill to go out in the very near future. Staff is finalizing that today. The reason we bring this one up is we have a number of landfill, brownfield sites, environmentally-challenged sites. Staff has been working on ways to get those sites back into activation and to produce good-quality jobs and be a benefit to their surrounding community as opposed to a detriment. Whoops, I apologize, one too many pushes there. In our...as we look at economic development, probably our strongest asset in Phoenix is our skilled workforce. That is what is attracting so many companies to choosing Phoenix these days. This year, we've hosted 222 custom recruitment and hiring events out of our business center, out of our One-Stop Shops, and other areas. As I said, 75,000 job seekers have been assisted. That's either through our website, through our online portals, through our One-Stops, through our Business and Workforce Center, through communications with staff, which is double, it's a 200% increase over last year, and 8,800 people attended events and visited our Business and Workforce Center in search of a job right here in downtown Phoenix. We have provided 94 worker training grants to Phoenix companies. What that means is we're actually training Phoenix's workforce, so we're elevating the existing companies with our workforce, but we're giving that workforce skills to be able to move through a career path, to be able to transfer onto other companies and elevate their own careers. Though these worker training grants have been key to our companies, as you see on the screen a few of them, that we've provided those worker training grants through our Phoenix Business Workforce Board. Our competitive advantage is our marketing profiles. Our competitive advantage is getting our messages out into the market. What you see in front of you is a marketing piece that we use for the gateway corridor. We're seeing that market start to elevate itself, and that's really from the runway to the 202, from 12th Street to 52nd Street, and we produce these marketing pieces in-house for each of our employment corridors. One of the areas that we've found that the tech workforce and the skilled workforce and others are looking for, the millennial workforce is looking for, as they're choosing where they relocate, and so much now is we're trying to create a great place where the workforce wants to relocate. wants to relocate, and the businesses are following that workforce. And one of our strongest competitive advantages is our cultural and nightlife assets. So one of my colleagues worked, they worked collaboratively together, multiple of them worked collaboratively together to create this asset map for the central city to show our companies, these are all the things that you can be doing should you choose more of the kind of I-17 to 52nd Street and that mountain-to-mountain area in which to locate. But we have these, we can catalog these for all the other employment corridors as they need them. We have been receiving national press in very interesting areas. As, as was mentioned earlier, the Warehouse District was recently named one of the 12 neighborhoods about to get crazy cool. We were able to take the New York Times on a tour a couple of Sundays ago, and they're doing an article in the coming weeks on the Warehouse District. On Yahoo, they did a video, a two-part series on Phoenix on the rise, which really called attention to all of the work that this council has been doing to change the conversation about Phoenix and put it into more of a mode with its peers. As we look, in the past, Phoenix has long been considered a third-tier market. We weren't considered for high-tech jobs, we weren't considered for corporate headquarter jobs, we were considered for third-tier manufacturing, distribution, call centers, things that we'd been known for, for years. We've moved up into a second tier and are quickly moving into a first-tier market. When you look at who we compete with, when companies are choosing Phoenix, they're choosing us as they're in that same category, they're choosing San Francisco, Boston, New York, Chicago, Denver, Austin. They're choosing very vibrant, robust markets. We're no longer competing with the second and third-tier markets that we used to compete against. So as this council continues to move its strategy forward, I anticipate Phoenix continuing to rise up in the, up in the thought process of companies and decision-makers. As we look at moving ahead in the coming year, following on that 2014 direction and guidance in the strategic plan from this council, we'll continue to focus on technology and advanced business services companies with a stronger focus on our redevelopment sites, getting sites that have long been stagnant into activation, focusing on our employment markets along Sky Harbor, at Metro Center, and Paradise Valley Mall, the new Loop 202, all the way from the eastern portion of Phoenix out as we move through the new employment corridor as the freeway finishes construction. Our retail services for our citizens are key. We've seen 108 million square feet of retail space shutter this year across the country. Our retail spaces need to be reinvented and reactivated in other uses, in adaptive uses, and we'll be working on a strategy and continuing to execute the strategy to bring something forward in the coming year on ideas and ways that we can move this forward. Of course, Loop 101 is a key employment corridor, and we're seeing activity there. Repurposing of our brownfield sites, our landfill sites, and, and most importantly, our job creation as we continue to move forward. Again, want to thank this mayor and council for its leadership and its guidance on economic development strategy, and with that, we'd love to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Mackey. Outstanding, thorough report. Thank you for staying true to the, the plan that we passed three years ago and sticking with it and working so hard to accomplish it. Obviously, the numbers speak for themselves, great, great results. Other comments or questions by members of this council? Councilwoman Stark, please.
Thank you. First, just a compliment, I had a chance to be on a panel in Houston for Urban Land Institute, looking at some of their developments. One of the developments we looked at was something similar to Carolyn, and it was funny because they said Carolyn Combs has set the standard for retail. So I took that as a point of pride. As they mentioned, it was in Scottsdale, and I corrected them that it's in Phoenix. But what, you know, I, I thought that was great. One thing I did want to talk about, some of your strategies about these strip centers that we're seeing a lot of vacancies, how are you approaching that with the centers and helping them reinvent themselves?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, we have been working on cataloging all the centers across the 517 square miles that is Phoenix, and then using our, our real estate tools to kind of say which are the ones that are struggling the most, where are the rents challenged, where do we see the greatest vacancies? It's, because it's not necessarily where you think it is. Sometimes it's in areas that seem less than obvious as to where they are. So we're cataloging those now. We work with Neighborhood Services through their Community Development Block Grant Program. Sometimes there are opportunities to provide facade grants and facade programs to really help elevate those centers. But as we're going out and visiting with some of the center owners, there are a number of them that are clear that they're not going to be retail anymore, they're never going to be successful retail. Could they be small entrepreneurial startup spaces, reset for the right price? Can they be more community centers, activated educational institutions? And where does it make sense to scrape them? And is there enough, is there enough in the pot that a private development could come in and buy them, that it would make sense to belay them and bring back high-density residential or office uses, or, or educational uses, that then further activate the intersection in the area that they're in? Our, our greatest challenge is, as you know, is those challenging centers spread like a cancer through the neighborhood and drag the neighborhoods down with them. And being able to have a strong focus on that retail area in 2018, I think as we move through this year, we'll be able to bring a good report back to you as to what we're thinking, kind of gain, working with Allen Stevenson's team and our Neighborhood Services team to kind of gain a thorough understanding with the council offices of, of what your constituents are seeing as our greatest challenges and executing against those with the strategy, bringing back to this council.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Waring, please.
Can I ask a question that got asked of me by a constituent, and we've talked about it, I was interested in the answer, and I thought the, the audience might be as well, Amazon. So can you explain a little bit about how you interact with the state, other cities? How does one land, not one, but how does a state land a project like that? How does that work? Don't necessarily, I guess, get into the potential of us getting it unless you feel that's appropriate and so forth, that's not really what I'm asking, just kind of like, how does something like that come about?
I guess the first thing I would say is why wouldn't we land?
Well, there you go.
A company like that.
We got all these advantages, you just told them. And, and do you have a son or a husband who has a garage band? Is that what that was? I'm just, I had to ask, I'm sorry.
We had to find non-copyrighted music.
Oh, all right, that's very nice.
Garage band is exactly where we got that. Councilwoman, we work, Mayor Councilman Waring, we work closely with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council and the Arizona Commerce Authority as those opportunities come in. So when you're working with a company such as, as an Amazon-type opportunity, the last thing that you want is anyone to feel like a community is divided. We work very collaboratively and closely together to aggregate all of our assets, to put them forward as one package. So we provide our information to the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. In this instance, the state was the lead role in that, in that package. The information is provided by us to G-PAC and then on to the Commerce Authority, who then rolls all of the submittals into one and submits it to whoever that corporate entity is, and in this case, it was Amazon. So we work, all 24 cities across Maricopa County work very collaboratively together. What's good for one city is great for another. While we may land the company, jobs in retail will go to a community right outside. If another city lands the company, we get, our citizens get jobs and, and the economic benefit that comes with that.
So Mayor, to something like this, we're not trying to undercut, I think it was Tempe and Chandler are the other two, and now does Tucson also have a, are they also trying to get Amazon?
Mayor, Councilwoman Waring, I'm not absolutely, I was not, I didn't see the final package that was submitted. I know there were a number of cities, I followed them in the press, as to which cities. No, we never undercut our fellow communities. We, we definitely believe in a collaborative regional economic approach, that is the direction this council has given us. By the same token, I'm highly competitive, and my position is to win it for Phoenix and make Phoenix look the best. But we, we have worked very collaboratively with both the regional economic group and the state on the submittal. Everyone did.
I think just the opposite, we, we want to make sure that whatever incentives the state may offer, they offer to all of the cities that are applying fairly and evenly so that one city isn't given additional advantages that others wouldn't. We, we just want to make sure that all of the applicants, including us, are treated equally. Please.
Can I follow up with another?
Of course.
Thank you. So, so it's kind of been under the radar, but we got, you know, Amazon, world's richest guy, and then we've got, I guess, the second, I think, now, latest rankings, buying, what, 80,000 acres 50 miles to the west. How does that impact, I mean, that hasn't, for some reason, it's almost gotten more national attention than, than local attention. How does that affect us? I know it's not in Phoenix, but I don't think it can be bad in any way.
Mayor, Councilwoman Waring, news like that is very good for Phoenix, because what it's doing is it's showing that the largest investors and people who've created some of the most thought-leading companies are taking Arizona as a very serious place to do business and make investments. So it raises the conversation for all of us across the, across the region, across the state, as these announcements are made. So when you see that in the national press of, of Mr. Gates acquiring land just west of Phoenix, it's, it makes people stand up and take notice and say, why is he looking at, at Metro Phoenix? It's, it's a good thing for all of us.
Yeah, I didn't see any way it could be a downside, but I, I'm almost disappointed it hasn't seemed to get more sort of pop. I would say, another thing that was in your, your presentation, talking about Mayo, which happens to be in District 2, obviously, in Phoenix, but in District 2, I do want to thank the mayor for, for spending a lot of time on that. We tend to be a little downtown-centric, but in this case, that is not the case, and a lot of work has been put in, and effort has been put in, and council members have voted for different, as you suggest, different steps along the way. Can you just talk about, I don't mean to criticize your otherwise outstanding thing, but obviously maybe just because it's in District 2, but I think Mayo Clinic speaks volumes as a national brand. I mean, everybody kind of knows what that is, I think, who's paying any attention to anything at all, really. So, so we're very proud of it to have it here, of course, but, you know, it was a little smaller part of the presentation. Can you just talk about what, what the future holds there? We, we have talked in meetings about how we're kind of underselling on that, people don't even seem to necessarily know what's there, even people who live kind of close by. Maybe you could talk a little bit more about what the future holds. That's one of the most, not pristine, most developable pieces of land, I think you've told me, between Dallas and the Pacific Ocean, might be the most that's available, has transportation, the infrastructure. You just talk a little bit more about that than, than the video talked about.
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilwoman Waring, that Desert Ridge, Paradise Ridge area, kind of between the reach to Deer Valley and from Scottsdale Road over to the 51, is some of the most desirable land in the entire Southwest, if not the entire Western United States. With Mayo as the anchor, they are second to none in hospitals. They were named in the top by the U.S. News &amp; World Report as top hospitals, and that was Phoenix, Mayo, as it wasn't Mayo in general, it was Phoenix, Mayo. And as we look at growing the Biosciences Campus in the Arizona Bio Medical Corridor that this council's been focused on for a number of years, having that 200 acres just on that southern side of 101, with Mayo as an anchor and working in part and partnership with us and Arizona State University, it will be a leading Biosciences area. Mayo continues to grow with their proton therapy facility. We see huge number of patients and research that's going on in that area, and they are locating docs and researchers into the area like nothing I've seen before in, in Arizona. So it's, it's a very dynamic area. When you look north of the 101, when you look in other areas, it will in the future be a very strong office market. At ultimate build-out, my guess is will be between 50,000 and 80,000 jobs in that corridor alone. And it's an area that is gaining significant interest.
And not to get too much into the weeds, Mayor, unfortunately, you talked about to the north, there's some legal entanglements, I guess you'd say, that, that have kind of precluded some opportunities, but there is interest. People should not take it as there's not interest in that area, there's tons of interest, things just have to get sorted out. Is that a fair assessment?
Mayor, Councilwoman Waring, that's correct. They are working on sorting those out now, and we are on pause until those are sorted out. But in the future, we see that as a strong employment corridor, and I think the, I think the development market sees it that way as well in the future.
I would say, just so people know at home, the pause is not our responsibility to sort out, nor is it our fault, I guess, is a fair way to say it. But, but going forward, I know you, you like the sound that you found for, for your music, but maybe next time, "Future's so bright, you gotta wear shades," if you remember that song?
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, I knew you, subliminal message there for next time, but, but really, I think it's true, City of Phoenix in general, but certainly for that area, and it's just something that I wanted to highlight during your presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Waring. All right, any other comments or questions by members of this council on the outstanding Economic Development, Trade, and Economy 2017 update? Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. We have been busy at the City of Phoenix. Congratulations to the Community and Economic Development Department, but really to the entire city as well. It has been a citywide effort, and I know one of our city manager's goals was to do some silo busting, and this really has been a good example of how we succeed when we work together. If we look at decisions like the South Mountain Tech Corridor, that's a land use decision, Streets has been very involved, we've all been working together to make sure that land is ready to go so that we can pursue those high-wage jobs. And the same thing in our Warehouse District, some of the most important things we did as a city was investments in physical infrastructure, making sure we dealt with flood issues, making sure we dealt with parking issues. So that, I think, is an important success story for us, and, and congratulations go to CED, but really to the entire city on this great results. I am particularly excited about the wage number, 7.6% over 2016 is a tangible difference that people can feel in their pocketbooks, and this is good news for people throughout our community. We're also making a lot of investments that I hope will benefit people across the income person, the income spectrum. So when we talk about that type of investment, it, it can really mean something to people at very different stages in their career, and the same is true for some of the companies we've been recruiting. I had a great chance to visit RJR Technologies before they hit their Oakland campus, before they relocated their headquarters to Phoenix. And a lot of the jobs, they're bringing headquarter jobs with, with great financial background, but a lot of the jobs they're bringing are also jobs that don't require a college degree. And the same, we've had great partnerships between CED and our housing department so that we, our, our housing residents can have more support and more opportunities to improve their economic circumstances. I think that's an important value for the City of Phoenix, that we're saying we want to invest and create a better Phoenix that works for everyone. So thank you for your leadership in this area, lots of good news.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Alkowsky, please.
Hey, Mayor, thank you, and Phoenix is hot, let me tell you. Downtown, with the living quarters of about 4,477 more housing downtown, the vibrant downtown, the nightlife and all that, but I really give a lot of credit to also ASU. I know that ASU was really that core factor to really bring people to downtown, and that's where all the housing and all that started, in the live, liveliness. So wearing an ASU shirt and seeing GCU, so I had to mention something about ASU. Also, I'm being from South Phoenix, the 202 is a big plus for us out there. We've been waiting for retail and hospitals and, and all kinds of great jobs, and one of the things that we sat down with the community and council member, Gago, myself, meeting with the community, they said, "We just don't want a bunch of retail, and we just don't want a bunch of warehouses." We wanted to make sure that there's some quality jobs out there. And we sat down and we planned out a, a tech corridor that, making sure that we have some good, high-quality jobs that are going to come in there and high-paying jobs. So I really want to thank our staff for sitting down with all those community leaders out in the Estrella Mountain and the Levine area to really work things out and making sure that we build a community what people would love to live in and work and play. Also, I'd like to talk about the, our Mexico trips. It's been great for the last 10 years I participated, see, it's great to see 150% increase in trade between Mexico and especially the Anamocil, seeing that's our sister city. For the last year and a half, I haven't really been involved that much in the Mexico trips and delegations and stuff. I like to get more information on that and to figure out what's going on and how we can actually increase that. Also encourage some of my colleagues to participate in that. What a great opportunity to go out there and really brag about our city, and at the same time, introduce some of the big businesses from Mexico with some of the businesses here in, in the City of Phoenix. So I really want to thank our staff for all their hard work, and really having that Team Phoenix approach where we bring all the different services together and our community to really plan out our city. It's not just one department, it's really the whole city coming together, and really want to thank the leadership of Chris Mackey and really bringing people together, and I think that's really important. When you bring the developers and the community, and we try to work things out before it becomes a big problem in the future. So thank you so much, and keep up the good work in making our city hotter than what it is.
Thank you very much, Councilman Alkowsky. Any other comments by members of our city council? Councilwoman Waring, please.
If, if, most people aren't going to watch this meeting, but they're probably not going to watch the video either, I don't mean to hurt your feelings, but, but if I was going to encapsulate, if I just had 30 seconds to talk to a constituent, is it a fair statement? The Phoenix metro area generally does better than the rest of the state. The Phoenix metro area generally does better than the rest of the state. The state as a whole is doing better than most of the rest of the country, and the country as a whole is doing better than most of the rest of the world economically. I'd say those are probably fair statements, unless you disagree.
No, I, Mayor, Councilman Waring, I would agree with you. Phoenix as a whole, the Metro Phoenix area, is the greatest portion of the state's economy and is doing incredibly well. And the state is, there are areas of the state that are struggling, but the state's doing well as well.
Yeah, compared to the other 50 states, and the other 50 states by and large are doing better than the rest of the planet. So really, we have one of the better, things tend to be really negative, sometimes I engage in that too. You know, the paper, I understand negative kind of sells, I'm not criticizing them for that, but sometimes it'd be nice to see positive, and really, if you really drill down to the business page or numbers that you present to us, we're doing better by and large than most of the rest of the planet, and the bounce back hasn't been quite as fast as it has been in the past, but generally, that's because we're not having as many housing starts as we used to, even though people are still moving here, even though we're the fastest-growing city and the fastest-growing county in the country, it's not, you know, we're not going to have, I think it was 60,000 housing starts at the peak, I mean, we're probably not going to see that again, at least anytime soon, certainly. So it's a fair statement, I think, to say we have one of the best economies in the world if we were pitching a company on coming here, bottom line. Is that a fair analysis?
Okay.
Hire him as a spokesperson?
You'll have to agree if you don't want to, but that's what I've kind of taken away from everything I've sort of gleaned. It's not perfect, it's maybe not as good as it could be, but it's better than most.
Yep.
Put that on a bumper sticker, better than most. Put that in your video for next year.
Better than most. I'll stack Phoenix up-
Maybe there's a song to go with it, I don't know.
I'll stack Phoenix up against anyone.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the council? All right, outstanding report. Thank you so much, Ms. Mackey, we appreciate it very much, and we see you all the time, but certainly for a formal report, we'll see you hopefully sooner than a year from now. Great update. Next, and there was no action item on that, obviously, next item is an action item. This is our proposed 2018 federal and state legislative agenda. How I propose to go about this is, here, obviously, our professional city staff, their recommendation on the federal agenda, see if there is a motion on that, and a second, and then we'll take, obviously, comments by the council, and then any vote that they may have. Then we'll do a separate vote on the principles for our professional staff to help guide them when we are not able to come back before this council, as the state legislative session is ongoing, and then vote on specific items, hopefully take it as a whole if we can. If anyone disagrees with that, let me know now. Excellent. Ms. Peters, lead us through this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Office of Government Relations manages the city's interactions with other government institutions at every level, peer cities and towns, county, state, Native American communities, and all of the components of our federal government. Of all of those, our relationships with the state of Arizona and the federal government are the most complex. Decisions made at the state and federal level impact every aspect of the city's operations, and so it is vital that the city closely monitor and participate in those decision-making processes. Today's staff is asking for council direction and adoption of state and federal agendas, and so I will turn it over to Government Relations Director Frank McKeon to make the presentation.
These agendas do represent the culmination of staff input from various city departments, yourselves as council members, and from input received during the council's subcommittees. A good way to look at the two agendas, that the federal agenda, you'll see more ongoing activities focusing on long-term and ongoing legislative issues, or the pursuit of federal grants and resources to support projects and initiatives for Phoenix. While the state agenda has issue areas, much of the focus is in digesting the impacts of typically 1,200 pieces of legislation and creating a strategy around the items that affect the City of Phoenix. As Karen said, once presented today, we'll ask for the approval of the principles and the agenda separate. To begin, we will, I want to introduce Clark Princell, our Manager of Federal Affairs, and he will present the federal agenda for your review.
So the federal agenda, again, this year will have two guiding principles. The first will be to promote fiscal sustainability, and the second will be to protect local authority. The agenda will, again, this year be broken up into four issue areas: public safety, transportation, water environment, parks and sustainability, and community development. This presentation will only highlight a few of the items under each of those issue areas. The first issue area we'll start with is public safety. So we will continue to advocate for COPs grants, and these are the grants that provide support for newly hired officers within the Police Department, and we will continue to advocate for public safety grants and programs that provide direct support and resources to crime-fighting and prevention efforts. On behalf of the Fire Department, we will continue to advocate for safer grants. These are the grants that provide direct support for newly hired firefighters, but we will only advocate for these grants when the city has the required resources that will allow us to utilize those grants. As well as advocating for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, or AFG, these are grants that the city utilizes for equipment for the Fire Department. We will continue to advocate for UAWC grants that ensure the city can maintain its homeland security mission at current levels, and continue to pursue federal grants and assistance to further develop and expand the city's specialty courts. We will track and provide input on immigration reform legislation and support legislation that would ensure that the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, or DACA, program remains in place until Congress modernizes the immigration system and provides more permanent form of relief for these individuals. And we will track and pursue federal legislation that bans firearm accessories that convert semi-automatic firearms into quasi-fully automatic weapons. In the transportation issue area, we will pursue all available federal resources to support local high-capacity transit. We will pursue all available federal resources to assist with flood mitigation and stormwater infrastructure needs in the city, and we will work with Congress and the administration to explore ways that the federal funding model can be improved. On behalf of the Aviation Department, we will be advocating for a resolution of the flight path issue that has been occurring since 2014, and advocate for changes to flight path decision-making process that would require community notification in the future, track and support FAA reauthorization legislation that reflects the priorities of the city, and work with our regional partners to support Luke Air Force Base. In the water, environment, parks, and sustainability issue area, we will be supporting dedicated funding to conservation efforts at Lake Mead, pursuing federal grants and assistance for the city's sustainability efforts, and continuing to advocate for funding opportunities from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Additionally, we will continue to advocate to advance the development of the Rio Salado-Oeste Project and support legislation that would provide federal funding for redevelopment of brownfields. And then finally, in the community development issue area, we will be supporting continued and increased funding for Head Start, as well as advocating for Phoenix to receive our fair share of Head Start funding, support continued funding for housing programs utilized by the city, and urge Congress to continue to invest in proven solutions to homelessness. And then lastly, we will continue our support for job-driven services which are locally administered and allow local flexibility to ensure local and regional employers' needs are met. We will pursue legislation which provides more options for local governments to regulate structured and unstructured group homes in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and communities within which they are located and the individuals seeking treatment and recovery services within them, as well as track and provide input on potential tax reform legislation to advocate for policies that will promote fiscal sustainability and protect the local authority of the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the federal-
Thank you very much for that thorough report on the proposed federal legislation for the City of Phoenix. Is there any questions, or is there a motion by any member of this body?
I move approval.
There's a motion and a second in favor of the staff recommendation. Are there any comments by members of this council? Councilman Nowakowski.
Yeah, Mayor, in the past, you know, we used to get reports about upcoming bills and what's out there on the street, you know, comments or future bills and stuff like that. For the last year, I really didn't get a report of that. I really didn't sit down with anyone to tell us, "Hey, Councilman, this is what we're hearing out there, these are proposed bills in the future that could affect the City of Phoenix." And a lot of these, I've heard it in all the subcommittees that I sat in, and one of the things that I'm hearing over and over is basically our departments are working on a lot of these projects of, you know, public safety stuff, the housing, the early Head Start, all those grants. Ever since I've been in, as a council member for the last 10 years, it seems like we've been working on that at a department level, where they're actually out there advocating, working for it. What I like to hear from you all is, we have a new president, I like to, he's coming out with his own budget, and I know that there's been talks about eliminating a lot of programs out there, and especially programs that could affect those certain grants that we bank on every day, you know, the safety grants, the Head Start programs and all that. I like to hear what's out there. I mean, I'd like you to all to focus on what can actually affect us as a City of Phoenix, kind of give us the heads-up, so we're not, in the last minute, just writing a letter saying we protest this or we're against this, but at least we can be proactive in a way. So I'd like to see more of that, because I think the grants are something that, kind of do it through the departments, and we do that on an annual basis, but I like to be a little bit more proactive and figure out if there's a way for us as council members to sit down with the congressional delegation to advocate for our fair share and stuff like that. I'd really like to see more of that at the federal level. Just a comment.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Nowakowski. Sounds like the staff has heard the request to keep Councilman Nowakowski in particular more briefed on a regular basis as to kind of things we're hearing that he should be aware of and all the council should be aware of as it relates to the federal, things going on in the federal government. All right, any other comments or questions in advance of a vote? There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman Guygoz, I apologize, did you have a question in advance, or do you have a question that may determine whether or not you reconsider the item?
It will not determine whether I reconsider it, but I did have a statement and two quick questions.
I apologize, please.
One, just in particular, in the federal agenda, we've been working very hard on the Choice Neighborhoods Program, and the tax bill, again, is significant risk to our plan for how we're funding it, so we really want to emphasize that's something that's happening soon and we ought to engage with right away. And then on the, it's under federal agenda, but could also have a significant state component on some of the grants that we're going to be pursuing. For example, we committed that we wanted to do on data storage, that we want to have all the physical data stored locally. I'm still okay with doing cloud, so I don't know if this commits us to particular solutions. Just because capital expense upfront, we need to weigh that, given our current budget, do we want to go for a big capital expenditure now or more, make it more of an operational expenditure? And so there are just some things in here, and I always like to mention, there's significant capital expenditures here that will then result in significant ongoing operational expenses. So we mentioned in the context of safer grants, that we'll make sure we're able to it, but in general, when we're applying for these grants, it would be good to understand what is the ongoing commitment if we have to pay for data plans for equipment that we buy, and make sure that we're ready and we can absorb that in our budget, because it would be a real shame to get a grant for some capital and then not have the funding to use it.
Mayor, Councilwoman Guygoz, I can assure you that we pursue, when we pursue grants, we consider the entire obligation, be it the upfront and then the ongoing, so yes, absolutely, that's part of what we consider, and in terms of cloud versus, you know, local storage, we will remain very flexible on that.
Wonderful, and I realize you are not the department in charge of that, it just, I didn't want to commit us in this, to going forward on this without continued review of, the technology is changing so quickly, and we ought to always check in and make sure we're doing the most cost-effective thing that delivers the best public safety result for our citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move on to our state legislative agenda. As stated earlier, we're going to break this into two parts. First is we're going to ask for a vote on our guiding principles. I believe these are the same as in years past, so there'd probably be no reason to explain why these are our proposed state guiding principles: oppose unfunded mandates, preserve local control, protect shared revenues. One that we have added in the last few years, but critically important, that's protect our water resources. Do we have a motion as to the state guiding principles?
I move the state guiding principles.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The state guiding principles pass unanimously. Now we'll move on to a little more, I know we don't, the session is coming up not too far away, but we don't have a lot of bills in front of us, and I think you want to give a little more specific guidance as to a state legislative agenda. Who's going to take that one? Ms. Peters, Frank, Ms. McKeon?
Mayor and Council, John Ring Gonzalez, Manager of State Affairs, will present our state agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first, the first new item on this year's agenda is police officer training funding. ASPOST, which is the organization which certifies and oversees the training of police officers around Arizona, has been providing grants to local law enforcement agencies, and those funds have been depleted over the last several years, there's been a reduction of those dollars. Those dollars are very, very important to not just train our Phoenix police officers, but those police officers from around the state. And it should be noted that the Phoenix Police Department, the academy, also provides training for police officers from around the state, their sheriff's offices, and so those monies are very important. If we can't secure these dollars, being able to train officers, we're going to have to either cut or we're going to have to raise the cost of the city. So, staff is seeking the approval to work with the stakeholders to try to find more funding for training. 911 infrastructure, as you'll recall, we came to you last year on this topic as an update, and this is a reminder, actually, we were successful in getting the $3.5 million for the Phoenix Police Department from the state in order to pay for much-needed technology. So as we move forward, we still have a need to make sure that the revenues are robust and they are coming in to meet our needs and the state's needs, so staff is seeking the authority to continue to work on this issue to seek additional funding for the 911 technology infrastructure. And then quickly, some of the areas that we continue to always keep an eye on when the budget comes out, making sure that the funding is there for the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center, which the Phoenix Police Department primarily operates, the Internet Crimes Against Children, and also making sure that the state hospital receives its adequate funding for its security purposes. And in the area of Title 34, we're looking for some changes, some modifications, some minor modifications to Title 34. As a reminder, Title 34 is the section of state law that governs public, local government construction projects, and so some of the revisions we're looking for basically deal with, there's certain alternative delivery methods in which state law has some deadlines coming up, and they need to be extended, so we continue to use those methods. There's also some procurement for some construction services that are out of alignment, and we just want to make sure that there's continuity and some, the numbers kind of pencil out for all the services that we can legally abide by for state law. Group homes, you remember that the state passed legislation that gave cities and towns some flexibility to begin looking at regulating group homes? There's a lot of work still left on that, as you're a part of this, that the state, the City of Phoenix has been a leader on this issue, matter of fact, they've even created a task force that's been working on this for months, trying to find that middle ground between protecting the neighborhoods as well as respecting the providers of those services for those people who are in much need of getting treatment. And so we are seeking the authority to continue to work on this issue to see how much more we can get the state involved with the licensing of group homes within Arizona. And then rezoning, you'll recall at the end of the state legislative session, there was an amendment to a bill that changed the percentage of what would trigger a vote at the council for rezoning cases. Right now, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and other stakeholders are meeting on this topic to try to find that, that solution of how do you deal with development, approving development, at the same time making sure that the neighborhoods have due process, and so staff is seeking the authority to try, to participate in those discussions to try to find those, that middle ground. Last year, the federal government sought a settlement with Volkswagen, given what they were doing with their vehicles on emissions issues, false reporting. The monies have been settled, and the State of Arizona stands to gain up to more than $50 million for air quality issues, trying to deal with those, and so staff is, wants to seek approval to continue to work with the state to make sure that the Phoenix metro region gets its fair share of those dollars for air quality control. And then a couple of items similar to the federal level, keeping an eye on any bills that may negatively impact Luke Air Force Base. that may negatively impact Luke Air Force Base, any bills that may change the drone statutes, and of course, similar to federal law or federal agenda, making sure that we pursue legislation that bans bump stocks for firearms. And that-
All right, that is the recommendation from our professional city staff. Is there a motion on the proposed state legislative agenda?
I move the state legislative agenda.
There's a motion, second. Mr. Leonard Clark, did you want to provide any comments to this council on item number two?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I was just concerned, as a member of District One, City of Phoenix, that you also, my council member, I'm glad, has brought up about drones. And it's not just, I hope that you guys will push this on the state and federal level as well, because, and it's not just citizens sometimes who are at the parks taking up all the space. It's, you know, I haven't seen that as much lately. But I'm concerned with the federal government. I'm not a libertarian, but I do agree with Mr. Paul, Rand Paul, that these drones are violating our Fourth Amendment right to privacy. The bump stocks, very important that you do this. I mean, from what I understand, the authorities are saying that this individual used this to convert some of his weapons into machine guns. And, you know, we just had a shooting, another shooting today, apparently, at a school. Also, the lead-based paint hazard. I would also ask that you check into the water levels, the lead, the lead levels in our water, and push for more funding from the federal government to put in new pipes, because, you know, Flint is not an aberration. It's not just a freak story. This is going on all around the country. It was a debate in the legislature in the last session. So, you know, our children, it's being shown, it's been shown scientifically, statistically, that the higher levels of lead in our water, the children drank this. The lower levels, of course, intellectually, that they're going to have, because there's brain damage. And I really, many of my friends who are low-income based, the Low Income Energy Assistant, Assistance Program, I believe it's LIP or something like that, the acronym, I really ask that you push that. And then a few other touches, because I'm always at the legislature, I'll give you guys a call every time, because I'm actually there more than some of your lobbyists. And you don't have to pay me $30,000, $60,000 a year. I'm just going to be there. But you might want to also, at the federal level, just to please our current chief executive, maybe mention some extrajudicial death squads, because that, you know, like he's doing with the territory in the Philippines. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks much, Mr. Clark. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have a motion in favor of the proposal, a second. Councilwoman, please.
Mayor, I'm going to go along with this motion. However, there's some issues on here. I may not agree with the outcome, such as the rezoning notification. I was quite fine with the legislation this year.
Okay, fair enough. Supportive, it doesn't mean that you're signed on every single one. You always reserve the right to take your individual position on any one bill. Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously. There'll be no further business for the city council. Today's policy session is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.